Troy, Zoning Board of Appeals to Order. And before we launch into our business, just a brief introduction. The Board of Zoning Appeals, or Zoning Board of Appeals, is a group of seven of your neighbors or peers appointed by City Council to pass judgment on a request for variances and other matters that are brought before them. A variance is a relaxation of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. Petitioners must indicate a hardship or practical difficulty running with the land that would warrant the granting of the variance. The Board will hear the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. When an item is called, the chairman will verify that the petitioner is present. Then the city administration will summarize the facts of the case. The petitioner will then be given an opportunity to address the Board, to explain the justification for the action requested. After the petitioner makes their presentation and answers any questions that the Board may have, the chairman will open the public hearing. Any person wishing to speak up, or speak on the request, should raise their hand, and when recognized by the chairman, come up to the podium and be sure to sign in on the sheet that's provided. The speaker should identify themselves with their name and address, indicate their relationship to the property, for example, they live next door, and state whether they are in favor of or opposed to the variance, and give reasons for their opinion. Comments must be directed through the chairman. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and closely pertaining to the matter under consideration. Only one person will be recognized by the chairman to speak at one time. At the conclusion of public comments, the chairman will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no other public comment will be taken unless in response to a specific question by a member of the Board. The Board will then make a motion to approve, deny, or delay action on the request. In order for the request to pass, a minimum of four votes for approval are needed. If the request is not granted, the applicant does have the right to appeal the Board's decision to the Oakland County Circuit Court. And I would, at this point, like to introduce some members of the Board and the city staff that are here with us tonight. First, on my far left is Glenn Clark. Next to him is Michael Bartnik. And then immediately to my left is Thomas Strat, who is not only a member of the Board here, but is also a member of the Planning Commission. I'm Dave Lambert, the chairman of the Board. Next to me is our vice chairman, Alan Neal. Next to Alan is Bill Fisher. And the last board member, but certainly not the least, Ken Courtney. Two other members of the Board that are here tonight are our alternates. They are Bruce Bloomingdale and Orestos Keltounis, and they're sitting out in the audience for this part of the meeting, but they'll be joining us up here shortly. And then certainly not least of all, our valiant city staff, first Paul Evans, the zoning and compliance specialist, and Susan Lancaster, the assistant city attorney. And with that, I'll ask Mr. Evans to call the rule.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bartnik?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Courtney?
Here.
Mr. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Neal?
Here.
Mr. Lambert?
Here.
Mr. Strat?
And at this point, what we will do is, before we proceed to the next item on the agenda, under our new procedural rules, if you were not present as a member of the Board for the previous meeting, and there was a case that's being brought back in front of the Board for deliberation, which we are in fact going to do tonight, the two board members who were not here last month will retire from, or recuse ourselves from the Board for this part of the meeting. And so, Mr. Clark and I will be leaving the dais here for this part of the meeting, and our two alternates, Mr. Bloomingdale and Mr. Keltounis, will join us. And also, Mr. Neal, as the vice chairman, will be chairing the meeting. So I'll turn over the gavel to him.
Okay. We're going to move forward at this point with item two on the agenda, approval of minutes for the March 20th, 2012 meeting. Does anybody, any member of the Board have a question or see a discrepancy with the minutes and would like to propose an adjustment? If not, can I get a motion from someone to approve the minutes as?
No need.
Can I have a second? Mr. Evans, could you give us a roll call for approval?
Mr. Keltounis?
Yes.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Bloomingdale?
Yes.
Mr. Strat?
Yes.
Item three, approval of agenda, tonight's agenda is before you. Are there any items that you would like to adjust, questions regarding it, or items you'd like to add to the agenda? Does any Board member have anything? Okay. All right, we're going to move on to item number four, which is the hearing of cases. We have one item before us tonight. This is a revisit of an issue that came before us last month. It's a variance request from Gail Morrow of Maters West Garden Center LLC, GPRZ Real Estate LLC, located on Coolidge Highway at 6530 through 6550, and I guess also 6566 Coolidge Highway. This variance is requested in order to expand on the existing non-conforming use. Mr. Evans, could you give us a brief summary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This property is located on the east side of Coolidge Highway, south of West South Boulevard in the overhead. It's the property outlined in red. The property is zoned as a single-family residential. All surrounding property is zoned as a single-family residential, with the exception of an environmental protection zoned property in the green here, just northwest and across Coolidge Highway. And a close-up of this property shows a layout where you have, there's a couple houses on the property, and a greenhouse that we believe was built at least in 1940, possibly earlier. The subject matter involves existing non-conforming uses on the property. Because the property is zoned as a single-family residential, city records indicate that the property has been used for certain non-residential uses, including retail, for a number of decades. The Zoning Board of Appeals first heard this case for an interpretation as to an enumeration of the allowed non-conforming uses on the property, and this was back in 1975. And at that time, the Board moved that eight conditions establishing the non-conforming uses in that single-family residential district were allowed on the property. I'll read them off for everyone here. The first condition allowed limited sales of potted, limited the sale of potted plants and cut and potted flowers to retail and wholesale customers from inside of the existing greenhouse building only. No storage or display or sale of any products is permitted outside the greenhouse buildings. No signs permitted indicating that any products are for sale at retail on the site. A small sign will be permitted indicating the name of the business on the site and the fact that the business deals in cut and potted flowers and plants. No landscape-type materials are to be grown or healed in, in mulch, wood chips, or other materials on the site. No additional permanent or temporary greenhouses or other structures are permitted on the site, which would tend to expand or increase the non-conforming buildings and use in any way. No vehicle or truck in excess of three-quarter ton capacity shall be stored outside of a building on any portion of this site. The temporary greenhouse on the site is not a non-conforming use and is subject to annual renewal request, and is subject to having the renewal denied by the Board at any renewal hearing. And the last condition is that the attached sketch submitted by the petitioner is submitted as a representation by the petitioner of the approximate location of existing buildings and vehicular parking areas, and the parking area will not be expanded or increased in any way. Barriers of a permanent substantial material will be erected to prohibit parking on grassy areas. These are the uses that the Zoning Board of Appeals in 1975 established as allowed non-conforming uses for this residentially-zoned property. The proponent tonight has applied to the Board of Appeals for a modification of those non-conforming uses. This case was first heard, last heard by the Board at our March meeting. The Board had tabled the matter to tonight's meeting in order to allow the applicant to further enumerate and clarify the exact uses that are being requested on the property. We did hold a public hearing, and I presume we'll have a continuation of that tonight. And I'm available to answer any questions the Board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Is the applicant here tonight, tomorrow? Would you like to come forward, and do you have any comments or additional presentation you'd like to make?
I did have a question.
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. You may come up if you'd like, or not. Mr. Bartnik has a question, I apologize.
That's all right. If I may?
Sure.
greenhouse? Is the temporary greenhouse gone?
Yes.
Thank you. So the 94 by 136 greenhouse that exists is not the temporary greenhouse?
That is correct.
So if we're looking at the drawing number 20, page 21, the temporary greenhouse is something that was to the east of the greenhouse. It looks like it's 20 by 96 feet.
Right.
That's the smaller?
Right, in the overhead here, right. In the overhead I'm showing now, there was it to the east, and that has been removed. That is correct.
So that issue about an annual, annual request for approval, that really no longer applies. Would that be correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Are there any additional questions for Mr. Evans or staff? Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for holding up. Please come forward. I believe we need you to sign in, too. Thank you for coming back.
Thank you. Okay, at your request, the last time when I was here, you told me to go to the city to help clarify the application. So what the city had suggested that I do is take the 1975 interpretation and to go through each of the items and then show the changes. Basically, what I did is I stated what the city's interpretation was, and then I made the change. The changes that I asked for were just for the arbors and then the things that can be sold inside and outside of the greenhouse. This property is zoned residential. And even though it is zoned residential, I can't use the property for that, for residential. And the reason that I can't use it is it's in a flood zone. I attached an attachment to show what it looked like in terms of the flood zone, so that the city has told me that it would be very, very difficult to get an engineer to be able to try to turn this into residential. Because of the flood zone, it's, you know, peculiar to this property, and I don't think the whole entire neighborhood has this characteristic. And my proposed variance, it won't be harmful, it won't alter the essential character of the area. And so, that being said, I've removed all of the landscaping from, and so there will be no landscaping or landscaping items like pavers and trees and shrubs that are larger than 24 inches in bulk materials to be sold on the property. So that was, the changes from the last time were just outlined with the interpretation.
And per your last application, I know, just for clarification, some of the items you had listed in the past were down-the-road ideas, concepts you might want to revisit at a later date, and you've extracted those now?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other questions for the applicant from the Board?
Yes.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes, the only items you're talking about changing are sections one, two, and five.
Correct.
And those changes are somewhat minor, really. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Bart?
Mr. Evans.
Mr. Evans?
Might I suggest, for the benefit of everybody here, including the audience, that the applicant briefly review those changed conditions, so everybody can hear what they are. I don't know if everybody had a chance to perhaps look at the application online. Maybe that would be helpful.
Would you mind doing that, ma'am?
Sure.
A little additional light on the subject, just to make sure there's no confusion?
Well, on number one, on the 75 interpretation, it said it was limited to sale of potted plants and cut and platted flowers to retail and wholesale customers from inside the existing greenhouse building. And what I have requested is to say that it would be limited to the sale of greenhouse, nursery floors, and garden center items to retail and wholesale customers in the area west of the white dotted line. So if you look at that, to the west, it will only take place, retail sales to the west of that line. And then I gave examples of the items that could be sold in the area west of the white dotted line. And they would be things like cut flowers, potted plants, flowers and vegetables, flats of plants, small bushes and shrubs that were not to exceed 24 inches inside, plant containers like maybe ceramic glass bases, things that I would use to plant plants in, small hand tools, garden tools, gloves, seasonal garden and lawn ornaments, trellises, shepherd hooks, statues, sculptures, bird feeders, birdhouses, fountains, and bird baths, and artificial and reel, and outdoor wreath swags, gray blankets, Christmas trees, and decorations. If you see that on the map, I've marked that there are no retail sales will take place east of the white dotted line on the map. So on that whole section over there, I won't have any retail sales. And after I get the area cleaned up over there, on east of the dotted line, I'll try to maintain it is a park-like garden center, so that it will be something that will be pleasant for people to be able to see how, you know, just to see garden area. And I've stated that there's no landscaping or landscaping items such as pavers and shrubs larger than 24 inches in bulk material to be sold on the property. On the second item on the 75 interpretation, I have no storage or display or sale of any products is permitted outside of the greenhouse. And in number one, where I listed the different garden accessories and different things under number one, I want to be able to have them outside of the greenhouse, to be able to display them inside and outside of the greenhouse in the area west of the dotted line. The other change was, it said no additional permanent or temporary greenhouses or other structures are permitted on the site that would tend to expand or increase, increase the non-conforming buildings and use in any way. And I would propose that if it's possible to permit plant displays in either shade or arbors or pergolas outside the greenhouse to provide shade to the plants that are displayed, and all the shaders, arbors, or pergolas would be easily removable, and they'll provide shade to the plants, or they'll be decorative only. The shader, the arbors, would be similar to the ones that I presented in that attachment number two. And that's what I proposed for this, for the changes.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Mr. Courtney?
Yeah, you won't, you obviously don't plan to continue some of the misuses that the previous, the previous owner did not follow these guidelines, obviously, with the trucks that he had stored out there.
Well, in one item, it says that there will not be a vehicle or truck in excess of three-quarters of ton capacity shall be stored outside of a building. That one item that I'm going to need will fall within that guideline, and I only need one item to be able to, right now, while we're cleaning up the property, which I've talked with Mr. Evans, while we're cleaning up the property, we have a little bit of a larger one than, it's not, it's, I'm not exactly sure of the tons, but it's not very large at all, and that's one that's just helping us clean up the items that are on the property. And it will be removed as soon as I can get a great deal of it taken care of.
Are there any, oh, sorry, Mr. Evans?
I have a question for the applicant, just to clarify. In your application, you indicate no materials in excess of 24 inches. I presume that's height, correct?
Yes, and plant, no plants higher than 24 inches.
Got you. Okay. And just for clarification as well, you indicate west of the dotted line. Are we to specifically interpret that when you say retail sales, items west of the dotted line, is that specifically in these, exclusively limited to these purple areas here, or just west of the dotted line?
No, it would be exclusively on the purple. When we had talked initially, you said it would probably be easy to explain it that way, so I put the dotted line, but then I showed where the arbors or the displays would be, and that's where I would, that's where I propose to put them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Are there additional questions for Ms. Morrow? Hearing none. I do have a couple questions, or more, just, just clarifications.
Okay.
And actually, the first question I have is actually a staff-related question. I'm not sure if you can speak to this, Mr. Evans, but it was mentioned last time in the public comments section, I think a resident had indicated that delivery vehicles or other vehicles coming onto the property may exceed the weight capacity of the vehicles that she's going to operate, and there was concern about load-bearing strength on the roads. I know that's something that most business owners do not have much control over when they had to take a delivery, but for, for as a zoning Board, do we, is that outside of our purview to even consider that? It's not part of the land, you know, it's on a public roadway, so.
No, and we do have a waymaster in Troy.
Okay.
And we do have departments in Troy that can examine the road limits and redesign the road if necessary, and as a matter of fact, there was an individual that had followed up with me, a member of the public, it might have been the same individual, we put them in touch with the engineering department, and are also awaiting return response from the waymaster.
Sure.
So certainly those are issues that we can handle internally. I mean, if anyone's violating the weight restrictions on the roads, it really doesn't have anything to do with this property or any other property, you could just be driving through Troy.
Right.
So I'm not.
Just to add to what Mr. Evans is saying, we actually have commercial motor vehicle police officers who are specifically assigned to check trucks out on all roadways, to make them be weighed. If they're overweight, they can issue tickets. They are, know the federal, state trucking laws backwards and forwards. They're excellent officers, and if there was ever a problem that they saw, those tickets are a huge amount of money. So we would be able to enforce, and in fact, our officers can confiscate their trucks and put them out of commission if they're under certain conditions.
Okay, I was comfortable with it, but I wanted to check, because I know it was a concern, and a legitimate one, and I, I was thinking it was already handled, just on the nature of residential or commercial building construction, that this issue is already addressed on a much larger capacity, so, but I wanted to check. Ma'am, just so, it's in the record, you answered this last month, but I want to be refreshed. What is your use for the house?
Pardon?
The house on the property?
There's two houses on the product, pretty, and they're both rental properties.
You intend to rent them?
They are rented.
Okay, okay. So you're going to continue to use them in the same manner?
Yes.
For some reason, I had a, an impression that one was vacant, and?
No, they're both rented.
Okay. The way you're presenting this to me is that, this is one parcel, but essentially, you're proposing that you're going to operate it with essentially two different entirely, two different uses, both on the west side and the east side. Your west side is your commercial operations, east side you're going to leave presentable, is how you best describe it.
Right, no retail will be done on the east side of the property, only retail will be done on the west side of the property, and it will be in the areas underneath the arbors and the displays.
Okay. What is your season, your operating seasons appear to go through?
They'll go through, they'll start with Easter generally, we'll start with Easter, possibly maybe with Valentine's Day, and then we move through harvest, we'll move then through Christmas, we take a break, we have a couple of months where we will be down working on the greenhouse, and then we start all over again.
Okay. Off-season, how do you envision the property looking? What do you?
Off-season, the property will, will be there to maintain it, to make sure that, you know, that the land is still being kept clean, and for the, for the months that we're not, when I say we're not there, we'll be there, but we'll, we probably won't be open. There'll be people that probably will stop in, but we won't have, you know, our displays, they won't have, you know, we won't have product out in the front.
Okay. Okay. And then just one final question, and I don't know what this ever might entail, but should the future issues relative to the city that it may want to look at relative to the drain along the north end, which appears from some of the public comment that we received in last meeting, which I know is not related specifically to your zoning request, but there was concern that it had been disrupted, per se. You don't foresee any reason you would prevent access by the city or any other party to enter the site to correct that issue? Should that be chosen to be done in the future?
Just as long as I like to know who's on the property.
Right.
We've had some issues in the past, and so we have put up some surveillance, because I need to know who is on the property. There were a lot of things that were done prior to, and so as long as I know who's going to come out, and I know that it's actually a city person, then I would, you know, have no problem with them looking at the drains. I think several of the people have come out, and they've seen, you know, looking at the river and what have you, and they've seen what actually it looks like.
Okay. All right, well, I thank you for entertaining my questions. Just to check before I ask you to, to sit down, is there any additional questions that have come up from the Board? No? Oh, Mr. Bartnik? Or, sir?
No, go ahead, no. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think what we're, what my concern is that we have, like Dr. Bush asked for in his, at one point in his representation and his presentation, the written documentation, I think he also pointed it out, but we want to have a thriving business there, without, a sustainable business, without encroaching on the illegal activity that apparently occurred prior. So my question is, do you think that you'll be able to have a thriving business with these limitations that you're imposing on yourself, along with the expansions from the 75 interpretation?
I don't think that I'm imposing any limitations. I had no intention of doing landscaping. My brother has been in the business for 25 to 30 years, I can get the exact amount of time. It, many- time. Many, maybe the people prior to me had to have millions of dollars to be able to make that type of money. Nobody knows what personally I have to make to be able to have a thriving business. And I think that my brother having this business, I know what I can make, I know what, you know, I know everything about this business, so I don't think I'm going to have any problem with it being a thriving business the way that I want it to be.
Thank you.
Okay.
I had a couple of other questions.
Sure, go ahead, sir.
And I don't know if this is something that you can answer, or whether it's something that the staff should be answering, but if, if you look at the, one of the first drawings that were put up, it appears that your, this particular piece of property, the property line extends out into Coolidge Highway, I think that's the one there, either one of those. So does your lot, does your property extend out onto the shoulder of Coolidge Highway? Either the city or, or the petitioner, do we know where that extends to?
I'm sorry, I don't know exactly where it extends to, I don't have the total, you know, dimensions or the boundary lines of it.
No.
With the size of the property, though, the way, that strip of land being there, whether it's with the city or not, whether it's your property or the city or the county, you're suggesting that you'd be able to maintain your retail operation in the other areas of the property along with inside of the greenhouse? That's, in your opinion, that's sufficient for your business plan?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, but did you have...
I wanted to know if she's going to do any farming in the, in the east area of the property?
When you say farming, can you tell me like...
Raise, let's say, new plants and...
I didn't...
Turn them over again, you know?
Oh, no, not to turn them over, what I wanted to be able to do is to make, you know, gardens or more like a, you know, if you were to walk through a park area, so not something to keep turning them over.
Just to give a clarification, because I'm not sure what you mean by turning them over.
Well, he had mentioned that if I was planting products to keep turning it over, and no, I didn't.
Okay.
That's not, once I make a garden, the only thing that I would be doing is enhancing the garden, possibly maybe adding a new plant to it, just to make it, you know, to look different.
I understand, I understand, yeah, I wasn't sure if it was the raised product, but you just answered that question. Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? No? Okay, well, we do appreciate you coming back and giving us more information.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to open the public comment section of the meeting. If anybody would like to speak to the board, it'd be the same policy as last month, if you were here, or if you're a new visitor. I would indicate that we would ask you to just come up one by one, you have to state your name, we do ask you to sign in, and then you are free to speak. We don't really apply a time limit, and, but generally, five minutes is a kind of a reference point, but at this time, do feel free to come forward if there are any, any individuals who'd like to address the board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'd like to make sure that whatever comes up is something new, not, I don't want to rehear the same arguments, we all have been here for the first round, and I think we all remember everything that was said, so if there's anything new that could be added on, that is what I'd be interested in hearing. I would hope that you would limit that to that.
I, I agree, I will give a small amount of attitude, for some reason, that because a month has occurred, if the memories of either one of the speakers or the board members may, you know, forget that something is questionable, whether it is new or not, but yes, that is an excellent guideline, I would like to hold to that, and we would like to have the input mostly focused on new information, and thank you for coming up, sir.
My name, my name is Greg Baldwin, I live at 1697, which is just north of the property, and I guess I'd be brief and just say I would support the variance as it's currently revised. And can I ask a question outside?
Absolutely, sir.
Regarding the cleanup of the stream, how would we handle that as homeowners, or has there been any, I know there's, Mr. Bloomingdale has been out, and we looked at the stream and some of the fallen trees and things in that area. Where would you, would we, where would we go from there if we wanted to clean up the stream, help with cleaning up the stream, things of that nature, to improve the flow?
Well, what I, what I would say is in part, I'll make a comment, but I'm also going to turn this over to the staff, is that, that one, the cleanup issue gets outside of the zoning issue.
Understood.
But second, and you would have to speak to the property owner, but I am, I am sure, first of all, if you would like to lend a hand as she goes through her efforts, I'm sure she'd be agreeable. As far as any jurisdictional issues about it being part of a county drain and such, I'm going to defer to staff on that, because I frankly don't know the answer. Mr. Evans or Ms. Lancaster, is anything, is there any input you can provide?
I don't know if I have the direct answer, I'm going to guess that there's a couple city departments that may be involved and may have more accurate information as to who has jurisdiction, if there's any assistance, the city or, I believe it might be a county drain. I'm out of cards right now, otherwise I'd give you one and ask me to call me in the morning, can you send me an email or we can talk at the end of the meeting? Okay, great.
All right. We'll get you an answer, but honestly, we don't know right now.
Rel, somewhat relative to that, is the 6580, is that city property?
No.
Is it privately owned?
Yeah.
So this, but the, the drain is a, is an open waterway?
Right.
Correct?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and for reference, also, the drain cuts across Coolidge Road, it goes into the Nature Center, and it goes onward, and also moves onward, eastward, it snakes along, but it, it just moves through this property. I believe there's another gentleman, sir, feel free to come up.
So hello again, it's Graham Bush, I live at 1699 White Birch Court, which is just north of the property. Perhaps whilst I'm signing in, I can just help you with the last question about the river. There was substantial improvement work done on Coolidge to improve the drainage going down the west side of the road, and also the bridge was repaired and the whole entry, the whole way the river flows underneath the road from the Nature Center, there's significant work done to that, and if anything, that's probably compounded what's actually now happened with the dumping of the mud and everything else that the previous owners did. I believe two of you gentlemen came out, thank you very much for coming to have a look. You walked down Greg's property, it's a bit of a shame, because if, if anything, the bulk of the mud is a little bit further down, and the river narrows down to about three feet, so all of the flooding that we've had is basically, partially because Troy have been very good at improving the drainage further down the road and in the Nature Center, if you see what I mean. Anyway, I have, first of all, I'd like to thank Gail for her resubmission, like Greg, I would support what she's doing. I, I have just one thing to add, and this is really Paul, something you and I discussed, which is the big sign that's been put out as a result of her 1989 application, which is, if you like, a different to the 1975 document, so my question to the board is, I'm comfortable with Mader's West having the big illuminated style sign they've got now, it's different to what's written in the 1975 document, and I just wanted to make the board aware of the two different applications, if you like, in case that is relevant. From my perspective, for Gail to make a success of her business, I think she needs to advertise it in some sort of way, and seeing as that's already been approved in 1989, I don't see a reason to change that, but it wasn't considered in this application, it wasn't mentioned, so I thought I'd come up and just mention that. Thank you.
Paul, one question relative to the sign, the change in the sign was done under a building permit through the building department, I assume, and there was no need for a variance?
Right, well, in 1989, the person who administered the building code, the sign code, and the zoning code was the same person, so presumably that individual believed that by issuing a sign permit for the sign that's out there now, that complied with the provisions of the 1975 interpretation.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, sir, Mr. Burton?
So, so then looking at the, you're closing your public hearing? I'm sorry, thank you.
I thought you were right, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Stratt. Are there any additional parties that would like to speak, sir? Thank you for keeping us honest.
Good evening, Mr. New, members of the board, Ms. Lancaster and Mr. Evans. Eeyore Federovitch, 1671 White Birch Court. Last time I spoke twice, so I'll prove to you that I'll be brief today by starting with a quote from King Henry VIII, who told each of his wives, "Don't worry, I won't keep you for long." First, I have a question, just out of curiosity, and it doesn't really pertain to anything substantive here, but if the property is in a flood zone and can't be used as a residential, why are there two properties that are being rented? But that's, that's just a curious, curiosity that would be nice to hear an explanation for, but again, neither here nor there in terms of the specifics at hand. One issue I do have is in Section 1 Petitioner, landscaping and landscaping items such as pavers, tree shrubs larger than 24 inches, and loose bulk floor materials will not be sold on the property. And Ms. Morrow explained that east of the white line, there would be no retail. I think it would be important to make sure that it says no storage and of any kind of landscaping materials as well, not just retail activity or sales, but storage. It would be good to define what larger than 24 inches means, so we don't talk about diameters, but about height, I would suppose. And that's basically my concern, I think a lot of progress has been made, I thank Ms. Morrow for her initiative, for her responsiveness, and I thank the board and the others present here tonight. And the white line is a nice idea, I speak for myself and I believe my mother, that the gazebos and the flowers out front, everything that was in purple is not an issue. What we need to do is prevent all of the illegal and horrific activity that was done there in the past. So good luck, and thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak before the board, sir?
Jim Mosley, I live at 1687 White Birch Court, that's a property that's on the north and eastern part of the parcel we're talking about tonight. And first and foremost, I want to say I'm in support of what Ms. Morrow has presented to us tonight with regard to the improvements that are to the west of the white line, as she indicated earlier, I think they're, they're going to improve the property and help make this business viable and successful, which we all really want. I'm talking mostly about, and I think on behalf of, of the residents that live on the north and, and the southern part of the property, our, our primary concern is what is going to happen east of the white dotted line. That is, that is the concern to us. And if there's no retail operations, no storage over there, and we make improvements to that area, I think that that'll be good. A couple of things that I have questions for that might be more pertinent to staff is that this property, we received an application to operate in 1975, and since then, the state of Michigan has adopted wetlands regulations, and they've empowered local municipalities in many of those areas to go and establish ordinances, and it includes, but is not limited to the development into the wetland areas that need local approval, and a lot of the stuff that has happened here in the past has been a development into a wetland area, because it encroaches and, and they've created berms and, and high towers and hills and things like that. With that being said, my question for possibly, probably more directed to staff than, than the board is, has the city of Troy conducted any soil samples on the property? Which in many cases required when there's a transfer of ownership. The reason I ask that is because there were a lot of chemicals, there's fertilizers, there were, you know, other things that were stored on the property, there were heavy-duty trucks, all those have the capacity to leach into the wetlands and, and into our water system, and I'm just wondering if we've done due diligence in protecting that environmental area, you know, as a part of our wetlands obligations of today. That wasn't the case in 1975, because we didn't have those kind of rules and regs. And then, and then, and the samples would not only include the property, but also into the, the areas around the water, the embanks, the embankments, and see if it has leached into, into the waterway, the water streams. And then, and then just as a, as a comment with regard to what Mr. Baldwin was talking about as far as improvements on there, would the city entertain, and are exploring grant money, where businesses and industry and municipalities and environmental groups consider cleaning this up and restoring it to the level it was previously, and really make it, you know, a more natural habitat?
I will ask staff to comment, I can give you a little bit of information, just because your questions touch on what I do professionally to pay the bills. Regarding due diligence, as far as a mandated requirement on a commercial transaction under the federal EPA, all appropriate inquiry law, if the party buying the property chooses to, to purchase the property, receive funding, let's say through a lender, and chooses not to do due diligence work, like an environmental study, whether it be a review of the history and/or testing of media on the property, that frankly is their choice. Sometimes those things are driven by, let's somebody say, lending you money, they want to protect their interests. Sometimes it's done just on the part of a buyer. Usually in the case of residential properties, and this is not a residential property, it's a commercial property, is how I would view it, that would have been really driven by the parties, and it is my understanding, based on what Ms. Morrow has said during the previous meeting, is that no, I don't believe that was done. Now, in regards to your comment about grant money, having pursued that with both state and federal agencies, I can tell you that it's lengthy, as you can imagine. Second, though, in order to obtain the funds to actually do something on this property, the title and ownership of the property would have to revert to the city. She's a profit-making entity, and to receive grant money, you know, they normally don't give that. They give it to nonprofits, and they give it to government entities and such, but to secure that money would be well possible, but lengthy, and considering, I think, some budgetary issues with the state, I'd say you're not going to succeed. But that's just my own commentary on those matters. Take that for what it's, that's worth. Regarding whether or not the city has ever done any sort of evaluation or testing, I don't know the answer, and I'm just going to turn it over to Mr. Evans if he has anything he'd like to add.
Well, I don't know the answer, but if someone at City Hall does know the answer, we can find out. And so my recommendation for actually both your questions, if you could forward those to me.
Sure.
And we'll make sure we get them to the right people, and if anyone at City Hall can answer those for you, we will do so.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you. Only, let's see. Is there anybody else who would like to speak before the board, ma'am? No problem.
Good evening, my name is Maureen Rustrella, and I was here previously, I live at 1894 Buckthorne Court, which is south of the property in question. I just really quickly wanted to, I was, I had the property with the bulldozer on top of the lovely berm. lovely berm, if you recall. So I just wanted to let you know that I really am in favor, and I strongly support Gail. Since she has been there, she's already made such amazing positive changes to the property, so I do appreciate that. I really would like to contact Mr. Paul Evans in the future, though, because I do have some concerns with the east part that Gail was referring to, where she does not plan on, you know, touching the property except to make it better, and she's already done that. So I understand with even the small equipment that she's been using back there already, because really, it's right in my backyard, that, you know, herself, her family, they've already are working diligently trying to make those improvements. But I do have concerns, since I made three and a half years of phone calls back, starting 12 years ago, even about the berm and what's in the berm, you know, not only, of course, what goes up to the water in the back, but actually the back of my yard, because when I did speak to a number of different departments, as I told you, and you have the information on that, the phone calls, berm department, I mean, just every department you could think of, all of that was done illegally, et cetera. So what's in that berm with glass and bricks and a number of different things, I really feel that Gail's working very hard and her family to make these positive changes, but especially since I inquired about this starting 12 years ago, I do feel that really the city is almost responsible for a number of those issues in the back. And I'm glad that you guys are a part of this now, but I really don't know where anybody was 12 years ago when this started. So I do support Gail. She's really just doing some wonderful things. I just hope that we can improve, you know, the back of it environmentally speaking, and just as far as the hazardous material that is back there, in my opinion, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I appreciate no bulldozers back there.
No. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Okay, I'd like to note that appears that everybody has spoken. At this point, I'd like to close the public hearing and bring the issue back before the board. There were two questions posed by one of the speakers that I would like to address. Ms. Morrow, could you come up for a moment? Thank you. There was some desire to define 24 inches a little bit more, and also to make sure that your intent on the eastern part of the property does not include storage, and I think those are worthy questions to explore quickly, or however long it takes. Do you have a problem with whatever, if we were to approve this tonight, move forward in any sort of formal action, that it would include that east of your white dotted line, that it would not include storage of material?
When you're saying landscaping material, there will be no landscaping material. I will have soil, but I probably will not have, because I need it for my pots to plant flowers. But in terms of landscaping materials like pavers, I'm trying to think of other things that go along with landscaping, maybe the rocks or, you know, the little granules or whatever, none of that. I have, my desire is in that back area where the previous owners have, they have these big white, I don't know what they're called, where they store rocks, bulk rocks, and whatever. My goal would be, is if I could get rid of everything and move those out, I would move them out and not have any of that there. Because I know that I will never, I mean, there's no, I've never done landscaping, I don't know anything about landscaping, and so it will not be done on the property, so nothing will be stored there.
Okay. How do you define 24 inches?
24 inches in height.
Okay.
And the reason that I need those is that during my Christmas season, a lot of times I use them for my Christmas planters.
Okay. All right, and just to, I don't know, really, I'm not involved in your business, but how wide is this roughly, the varies?
Well, I guess usually if it's, you know, if I'm using a boxwood or a shrub, I don't know, I guess.
About 24 by 24?
Let's just say 24 by 24, or something like that. It would be a small, it would not be, and probably 24 is maybe a little bit higher than probably what I would use, but it's safe to say 24 inches.
Sure, okay.
In height.
All right, I appreciate that. Having you up here, I just want to make sure, is there any other board members that would have any questions based on what Ms. Morrow said, and the public comment, et cetera, for the applicant? Mr. Burton?
Just the sign, the sign is, the sign that's up there right now conforms with the 1989 modification, that's what you plan on using?
Prior to putting the sign up, I checked with Mr. Evans to make sure, and he said that it was fine.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Courtney?
Yes, if I took your request and just scratched off, after 24 inches in size, and just changed that to in height?
That would be fine, that would, I agree.
And the rest of the, okay.
I have one question for you. I know this issue comes up, but I think it's worthwhile for you to speak to. You have done a lot of effort on the eastern part of the property. I know your neighbors appreciate that, the city appreciates that. I know it's limited by your time, effort at cost, and probably at some point in time, a line where you would say, "I'm basically done." I don't know if there's any input on that matter you would like to give. It is not related to your variance request, but because of the nature of the site and the other concerns that have brought your residents, your neighbors out to speak on this issue, is there anything that you would like to comment on? And you don't have to, because I'm throwing this question at you, but I want to, I guess I'm taking this opportunity to try to see if there is some rational idea as to what you realistically can do versus what maybe somebody wants you to do.
Well, I think that probably the neighbors have seen anyway that least the ones that are on the south side. They've seen that in a very short period of time, I took occupancy in January, and at the time, I was very concerned because there was probably anywhere, I don't know if it was six to eight dumpsters, 40-yard dumpsters of debris and garbage that the tenant left behind. Our goal was, is to get all of that debris and garbage into the dumpster so that it wouldn't freeze, because if it froze, we knew, if a typical Michigan weather, we may end up freezing and having that stuff out there for months. And so with the help of family and friends, and just some other people that I called in, within a matter of probably two weeks, less than that, we had the entire property cleaned of the debris that was there. Now, we didn't have it leveled out. We knew that, when I say leveled out, there were holes where the trees were knocked down and what have you, but in such a short period of time, we've been able to accomplish it quite a bit. And I would have to say that, you know, our goal is to continue to keep working at it, working at it. I know that it was not overnight that this mountain, you know, came into existence, and I couldn't say, is it going to take me years, it going to take me two years? I'm not sure. My biggest goal is this, is that I'm not going to stop until it's cleaned up. And it will be cleaned up. And so, you know, I wish I could say a timeframe, I just don't have a timeframe in mind that I could get it cleaned up, but I'm not going to stop until it is clean.
Well, I appreciate that. I can't speak for the board, it just seems like a reasonable approach and answer, and someone who's acquired this property. I just wanted to give you an opportunity to speak to that, because it seems to be the issue that floats out there. Mr. Evans, do you have a question?
Yes. Gail, when you indicate soil out there, could you give everyone here a description of the amount of soil? Are we going to have large mounds, or bags, or a couple of front-end bucket loads? Any idea?
No, there's some good-sized mounds out there. I mean, I, you know, I, in comparison, I'm not sure what to say. I think that a couple of people have been out there, Mr. Bloomingdale I know has looked at it, and maybe he can kind of equate it with something so that...
Just a minute. Mr. Courtney had his answer.
Yes, that's not, what he's asking is, I think, is the potting dirt that you're going to bring in, what kind of mound do you even have of that?
Right, that's what I meant.
Oh, you mean, oh, no, no, I'm...
Thank you, Ken, yes.
Oh, no, 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 I'm not bringing in any mounds. My potting soil has to be, potting soil comes in bags, and when I bring them in, they have to be in bags because we don't want the soil contaminated or anything.
Some bags, 10 bags?
Oh, no, I, I think, gosh, I mean, I would have to say, bags. You know what I would have to go, I would have to say, I mean, it's, I need enough to just plant my plants in the greenhouse, so I, I mean, if I can, I can always skip back, I mean, it's not...
Talking maybe a few pallets of bags, something like that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Courtney, did you have a question?
Yes, the only other thing in the request that I would make a change in is number seven be deleted, since you no longer have the temporary greenhouse, and number eight become number seven.
Would you be agreeable to that, ma'am?
Number seven...
Would that prevent me from coming back at some time? My idea is, no?
No.
Okay.
Nothing prevents you from coming in and asking?
And asking again? Okay, that, that's fine.
It's just that you, because this says right now that you have a temporary greenhouse, which you don't have.
No, I don't.
So that would eliminate number seven and make number eight become number seven.
That would be fine.
I'm Mr. Chair. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I think, if you don't mind, Mr. Bloomingdale, did you have a question for the applicant?
No, I was going to comment on the debris at the back of the yard. I had walked the site on Wednesday a week ago, and it's industrial dimension debris. And I comment on that because your ability to clean this up is going to be enhanced or limited by the amount of equipment that you have access to. The concrete barriers that she referenced on the property are actually highway safety barriers that are used during construction. So that takes a heavy piece of equipment to lift and a sizable truck to get it out. The amount of soil there is significant. And so my comments then would be this, that I would encourage you, and I know you have in the past, and I admire you for it, also your neighbors, to establish some kind of communications on a regular basis. I understand that there's a homeowners' association, both in the south neighborhood and the north. I would encourage you to contact their representative so that they're aware of what you're doing. Some of the comments that were made when I talked to some of the residents was there was still noise going on back there. Because I talked to you prior to it, I realized that noise was because of the removal of the stuff that you were doing. So I think that information, communication in both directions would help everybody. And I would summarize my thoughts by saying that is you address those things, the barriers, the dirt back there and what have you. If your neighbors are aware of the fact that equipment's going to be back there running, then I think that helps them understand what's going on.
Okay. Hopefully, maybe I can get some email addresses of those people, and I have no problem to say that, you know, this is what's going to be done at a certain time, because at that point, if it is a large truck that has to go back there to remove it, I certainly will let everyone know that, you know, this is what we're doing, this is what we're removing, and so that they'll know that, you know, what we're actually doing.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomingdale. Yeah, I think that would facilitate a lot of goodwill back and forth, and they would understand why you have this hot occurrence, you're not doing something different. In other words, you're improving it, and it would give you a lot of understanding. Ms. Lancaster, I believe you had a question?
Well, before Mrs. Morrow sits down, I have a suggestion to the board regarding the storage in the back, because that's a new issue that she hasn't written out. I'm wondering if the board would be interested in her having, perhaps having Paul add to her map a location where the pallets are going to be, so the neighbor know, the neighborhood knows where her pallets are going to be, and it's up to the board to ask her to do that. In this case, we're protecting the record because this is just like the 1975 record, and not to say we don't want Mrs. Morrow here as long as she wants to be here, but if she ever sells the property, we want to make sure it's clear to any new homeowner that he gets this many pallets, or she gets this many pallets, and this is where they're going to be. So the board may want to query her as to whether or not she'd be willing to put an additional indication on her map as to where she's going to store her soil, if that would be possible for her.
I'm sorry.
You know, if we don't approve this, and we let this go, what do you think this is going to look like?
I mean, you know, I really feel for, she's really tried to do everything she can for us, and we're asking her to do more and more and more. I mean, she's trying to do whatever she can to be a good neighbor, and I think she's going to try to, to take those barricades down, those things weigh several tons, you might even want to bury them, but that's not our problem. That's not what we're here for right now. And I think we should focus in on what we're here for, and I know you're going to do whatever you can to help us, and we're all interested in the same thing, but I'm hearing, I'm frustrated here right now for you.
Thank you, Mr. Stratt. To add one little extra clarification, both to the public at large, yourself...
That's not the question.
Well, actually, excuse me, sir, I have to, I'd like to make a comment, I think I'll tie that up real nice. Is, this unfortunately is a property that has had an unfortunate history, and the residents had obviously made some efforts in the past, working with the city, to resolve it, to varying degrees, that's been successful or not. I think I would be remiss by not allowing that extra input. Now, that input has been given, and I think we have a property owner who is going, in my estimation, it's just my opinion, well beyond what I guess I would expect someone to do. What you do with those concrete barricades, I don't know. I know the way a lot, Mr. Stratt is right, it is not something we're trying to tie you to here, I want to make it clear, is that any comments you make, you saying, "I intend to do the following," does not mean that it is a contract, and it is outside the purview of this. I just know it is a sensitive issue for your neighbors. I appreciate you commenting on it. And exactly what you do with something of that nature, for example, I got to tell you, I almost don't care, because I don't know what I could say. Having said that, and in the interest of wanting to tie this up neat, so that going forward in time, should you sell the business, I think Ms. Lancaster's point is a good one. I do not want to go and postpone this issue and close it out tonight, but from a perspective of just some general ideas to where you would put that pallet, storage area, it would be worthwhile if you could provide that, and Mr. Evans could take notes. What we have done in other cases is we have situations where drawings from applicants don't quite fit, and the information that comes from you during the meeting is adequate so that we can amend it later. And then therefore, everything is done, because I want to close this out tonight.
Okay.
So if there's something you can add to Ms. Lancaster's comment, please do.
Okay. In terms of where I envision that the pallets are going to be, is they would be west of the white dotted line, right at the back of the greenhouse. And the reason being is, there's a door to that back of that greenhouse, several doors, actually. And in order for me to plant, I start planting at the back of the greenhouse, so the soil will be on the west side, right where you see, it looks like a road that's in the back there, there's also about six feet of dirt, I guess you could say, six feet of dirt and then 10 feet of a road. And the pallets would be back there because I have to access them and bring them into the greenhouse to be able to fill the containers.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Evans, her description, does that give you information adequate to compile for no purposes to adjust the drawing at a later date and then show to the applicant?
Yes, basically, I'm going to try to do it now here. I'm going to try to draw a rectangle between the dotted line and the, right? Kind of somewhere in there, is that, Gail, is that anchored?
Yeah, if you, it's closer to the greenhouse, it would be almost right up to the greenhouse, because they're not going to be stored in the road, in the road that, or that cement road that's there, but they'll be up really close to the greenhouse in that area right there.
Again, you're not crossing your way... Yeah, you're not crossing your white line.
No, I'm not crossing the white line.
To me, it's, put it wherever you want then. You're on the west side of the site, right? I don't mean to be flippant or anything, but the concern was it was on the east side of the line.
Right. So there would be nothing on the east side, nothing on the east side.
Well, I think we'll add that to be more detail, but I think you, I don't see any changes to what you're actually asking to do.
Is that rectangle that I've drawn on there indicative, reasonable?
Yeah, it might be, you know, to the end because I've got another garage door that opens up on the side, but I doubt it. It'd probably be, you know, but it absolutely will be on that side of the white line.
Okay.
Okay.
I think that's enough so staff, current or future, will, if the board is inclined to grant with this condition, that they'll understand the condition as well as future owners.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any additional questions for Ms. Morrow before I release her from all these questions?[847.32][847.32](Laughter) Thank you for coming back up. I would like to now bring this issue back before the board for discussion and/or motion or discussion of motions, et cetera. Mr. Fisher?
I've got a question.
Sure.
Paul, the white line, I think the white line is a great idea to differentiate where there's going to be retail and where there is not. I'd like, I think it would be a good idea if we actually had some footage from Coolidge to where that white line is going to be. And if we look at page 24, there's a map that shows from Coolidge, it looks like 90 feet, and then another 90 feet for the greenhouse.
And then there's another 10 feet in the drawing, 10 feet to the road, to the temporary, what was the temporary greenhouse?
Right, 10 feet to the temporary greenhouse.
Okay, am I showing it over, I think I'm showing it here?
Yes.
On the overhead.
So if I'm seeing that right, I'm looking at 90 plus another 90 would be 180 feet, right? And then if you go farther down, it looks like there's 10 feet between existing greenhouse and temporary greenhouse.
Right.
And then is that another 20 feet?
I'm going to guess...
The temporary greenhouse that doesn't exist anymore.
Yeah, the former temporary greenhouse is 20, I thought it was 28 feet wide.
So my suggestion may be that the dotted line be designated as 200 feet from Coolidge so that as the property goes forward, there's actually a designation to where there'll be retail and where, I guess, the east and the west of...
There's a couple of ways we can designate that. We don't even be able to measure from the greenhouse. Essentially, I think it's reasonable for staff, if the board is inclined to approve this, is reconcile the aerial photo with the, the one with the, here, I'll show you. Whoops. We can reconcile this one with the features on the property and add dimensions to it so everybody's clear in case there's minor adjustments later.
Which would give her plenty of room to store the dirt.
Right. Yeah, I think we can do that. I don't think that's a problem.
I think if we do that, if we look at a suggestion for a motion, if we look at item one, it says limited to sale of potted plants and cut and potted flowers to retail and wholesale customers from east of the designated line. That states that going forward, that there'll be only retail east of, no, west of the line.
West of the line.
West of the line, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's in the...
Then if we go to number two, no storage or display sale of any products is permitted east of the line. Would that take care of any designation between what would be done on east and west of, for the property?
Well, it works for me if we include it in the motion. Mr. Courtney?
You know, the...
If you don't mind, Mr. Smith.
The request presented does just that. It says west of the line, west of the line.
Mm-hmm.
Which is...
So we're just designating where that line is?
Yeah. And what they're saying is west of in each case.
Right. This is a permissive, so anything that you permit specifically is allowed. You don't have to say, we prohibit on this side and permit on this side. If you say, we're allowing outside storage west of the line, that automatically says that you're not allowing outside storage or anything else other than what's specified on the other side.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody else on the board have any questions, suggestions, or other input regarding this matter? Okay. Is there anybody, is there any board member would like to make a motion at this time concerning this issue?
I guess I could use mine as a motion.
What we could do is...
What I would like to do is go through all eight of them.
Okay. If you want, I can read them all.
Can we do as kind of a working in progress motion and create it as we've done in the past on these challenging ones?
You know, if you're satisfied with the application and the testimony and the modification to the map, as discussed here, I did hear that we wanted to clarify here, no trees and shrubs larger than 24 inches in height. If there are any other...
Number seven's out.
Number seven is eliminated and eight will become number seven. If you just want to reference those modifications to the application that were discussed here and testified about tonight, I think it's pretty clear, at least in my mind, staff's mind, if you want to make a motion somewhat incorporating that without necessarily rereading the entire two or three pages.
Okay. I don't want to lead the board, but I don't think I should be the one making the motion. But if a board member would like to step forward and offer something along those lines or whatever you would like, we could bring it to the floor for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, your...
Yes, sir.
I would move to approve the application, I would move to approve the application that was submitted last month as modified by the petitioner's two-page statement at what's part of the record, at least digitally, is page 14 and 15, with the modification noted that the small bushes and shrubs will not exceed 24 inches in height. Think the record's pretty clear. There is a flood zone, there's a hardship, and there's a history of the nonconformity going back to approximately 1940. And the petitioner's made it clear through the testimony last month and this month that she's not intending to continue the illegal, nonconforming type uses.
Support.
Thank you. Is there a support? Mr. Courtney?
Mr. Stratt? You might want to possibly indicate that the dotted line that is so indicated be established and verified by our city engineers as to the exact location. And then they can actually create a legal description binding that so that it's incorporated.
Good.
Mr. Bartnik, would you be willing to accept that as part of the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Courtney, you agree?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, please don't forget about the storage east of the line that we discussed. Storage maintenance and maintenance.
Thank you. Taking a, we have a question on the floor. Yeah, I can't. Paul, one clarification question maybe to close this out with this, a question for staff. Can you please describe to us the storage area that is going to be west of the line for the soil pallets?
Yes, in the overhead here, the area indicated in red.
Yes.
Behind the greenhouse is going to be the storage area west. So that's the allowed storage area for the bags of soil.
So for clarification, the motion that's on the floor does not include any storage east of the white line?
Right. It includes storage as indicated here in red.
Right.
And I had, I would ask the motion maker for a clarification.
Right.
Mr. Bartik, you'd indicated specifically pages 14 and 15. This map is page 16 and also 17, and I'm presuming you wanted to incorporate those submissions as part of the...
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I just want to make sure this is clear for all the comments that are coming in. Are there any, any discussion with the motion on the floor? No? Mr. Evans, can you call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Bloomingdale?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Bartnik?
Yes.
Mr. Katsoussis?
Yes.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes. Good job.
Ms. Morrow, you have your variance. We wish you the best of luck with your business, and we do appreciate the efforts that you've made to revitalize the property. Thank you. At this time, it is necessary for us to return Mr. Lambert to his rightful place and ask Mr. Clark, of course, to take his spot. I do want to thank the two alternates who have sat on a rather difficult case. You've got a baptism by fire. And I want to say thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Neal, for chairing the meeting in my absence, both this month and last month.
Good evening, Mr. Neal.
Next on the agenda is miscellaneous business. We have one item here indicated board discussion regarding alternates, and I'm not sure how long that discussion might take. But before that, I wanted to ask Mr. Evans, is our election of officers next month?
Yes.
Okay. So just be aware that we will at our next meeting in May elect the chairman and vice chairman for the board so you can begin your campaigning as soon as possible. I will not be seeking a second term as chairman. Two years is plenty of time to serve as chairman and turn it over to another individual to chair this board in the, in coming years. And with that, does have...
Can we draft you in a second?
I won't give a Shermanesque statement, so... Mr. Evans and Ms. Lancaster, maybe you could go over the board discussion regarding alternates. You provided all of us with a, some email correspondence from some other cities with how they handle the whole issue of alternates and maybe kind of touch on any of the common commonalities between those three cities.
I will let Paul, because he did the initial research, and then I can give you my thoughts when he's done.
Okay.
He contacted some of the other cities.
Yeah, we contacted four cities, and the three cities that responded, the fourth one, Sterling Heights, they don't have alternates. So it does appear that the alternates are at least asked or encouraged or at least allowed to attend meetings even though they're not sitting. It is consistent that when regular members cannot sit for whatever reason, that the alternates are asked to sit. I don't see necessarily a requirement that any alternates are required to attend meetings that they're not sitting on. And some of the alternates are paid, some of them aren't. So it looks to be that at one end of the spectrum, alternates do attend. At the other end of the spectrum, they attend only if asked.
Ms. Lancaster?
Mr. Chair, I think it's really up to this board to decide. I did have a conversation with Amy Bittner, who's our city clerk, and we went over the ordinances together. And basically, the alternates are really not considered members of the board until they're asked to sit. So they will not be paid if they're not sitting for a particular item. Things that you have to consider are their convenience. This board, since I've been sitting with it, has been very good about notifying Paul that they're not going to be here. And you've been, that gives Paul enough time to get an alternate involved if, in fact, that's the situation. The only thing that may come up is someone doesn't recognize a conflict of interest until someone gets here. And those conflicts are pretty much, you really only have to recuse yourself if it's a financial interest, a direct financial interest. You're actually getting money from the petitioner. Although we recognize it as if, if you feel like it's going to give the appearance of impropriety because you're sitting on the board, you, we've always let you recuse yourself in those situations. So basically, it's up to you. You can have one alternate every other month come. You don't have to even take their turns so that one of, both of them don't have to sit. Or you don't have to have either of them. If we could make it, they'll take turns anyway, I believe, if we need an alternate and it's only one, that it would be every other month that they're sort of on call. We can do that. So there are really no rules other than unfortunately, they don't get paid for sitting in the audience. And some of, short meetings, that's probably not an issue, but longer meetings, that's always inconvenient for the, for them. So I think if you want to open up the discussion and hear what everybody has to say, we can maybe talk about it and...
Would it be appropriate to ask the alternates for input?
Certainly, they should, they should be involved in this too since they're the ones that have to, and we, to see their schedules and see how difficult it would be. And they're certainly entitled to make suggestions for this particular issue.
Okay. Any suggestions from board members? Yes, Mr. Courtney?
Yes, I would, I would encourage them to come when they can do so, but I don't think there should be any compelling of their attendance, other than when they're notified that we need them. But I would encourage them to come. I don't think we should compel.
Okay. Mr. Neal?
I thought that a few meetings back, that in working, in discussing this issue and working through it, there was a need that we really needed to have at least one alternate at every meeting, even though, yes, people do call. We could run into a situation where we don't have somebody, or we have some issue that comes in front of us that we have to recuse a member. And then what do you do if nobody's here? So with that being said, and I would, I would just suggest, and I'm not sure if this was discussed or not, but my, my suggestion is that, yes, one alternate should always be present because we can't, can't see those occurrences before they occur. But if they do come to the meeting, whoever that would be, since we are asking you to come, I think the fee that we get for meetings is like $25. I think it's a small fee.